I hereby call the May 5, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please do a roll call?
Commissioner Glenn let me know he would not be able to make it tonight. Commissioner Allen also let me know he would not be able to make it tonight. Michael Collins?
Here.
Lynn McCabe?
Here.
Will Fernandez?
Here.
Kurt Scoggan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the approval of the agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving the agenda as written? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved as written. Commissioner McCabe, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we're going to go ahead and go down the consent agenda. We have the regular meeting minutes for April 21, 2025. Introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters. There are no quasi judicial matters to introduce. Under legislative matters, we have Resolution 25-09. A resolution of the Madanouska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance modifying the intent notification and appeal process for MSB 17.05, Essential Service Utilities Staff Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. There are no committee reports, agency staff reports, or land use classifications. At this time, we're going to open audience participation. This is an opportunity for you to speak on any item that is not listed on the agenda for public hearing today. If you are on the phone, please press star three if you'd like to speak. Okay, we don't see anybody on the sign and sheet, but is there anybody here in the audience today that wishes to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda today? Okay. Hearing and seeing no persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing? Audience participation. Okay, hearing and seeing none, we're going to close. Audience participation. We're going to move right on to quasi judicial matters. First is Resolution 25-04. A conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60, conditional uses for the operation of a marijuana retail facility. The proposed location for Fort Green, Alaska, is 7821 West Parks Highway, tax ID number 1818000. L as in Lima, that is 001. Applicant Ryan McKay and Jana Wetson. Staff is Natasha Hindell, current planner. Staff report? So it looks like we have Rick Benedict to do the staff report today. Please go ahead, Rick.
Thank you, Commissioner Fernandez, I appreciate it. As Lacey mentioned, I'm going to be covering for Natasha tonight. She's absent at this time. So I thank you, good evening. My name is Rick Benedict, I'm the current planner for the Development Services Division. Like to take this opportunity to provide the commission with an overview of the proposed conditional use permit this evening. The staff report for PC Resolution 25-04 starts on page 22 of your packets. Ryan McKay for Fort Green, Alaska has submitted a conditional use permit application for the operation of a marijuana retail facility at 7821 West Parks Highway. The proposed use will occupy a structure approximately 1,237 square feet and include a future build out of a drive through window. The subject parcel is approximately one acre in size and part of the Ralph Kilborn subdivision. It is situated north of and adjacent to West Parks Highway. The property lies within Meadow Lakes Community Council area and the proposed site has historically been identified for residential use. The property owner has authorized Fort Green, Alaska.
Can we pause for just a minute, Rick? Sorry about that. We have to do the ex parte.
I appreciate that. And to the commissioners, do you or any of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Hearing and seeing none. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, or other interested parties or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? Hearing and seeing none. Are you able to be impartial in this decision? And we have an affirmative from all sitting commission members. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Benedict. Please continue.
Would you like me to start over or pick up?
I'm comfortable with you picking up where you were.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll start from the request. Ryan McCabe for Fort Green, Alaska submitted a conditional use permit application for the operation of a marijuana retail facility at 7821 West Parks Highway. The proposed use will occupy a structure approximately 1,237 square feet and include a future build out of a drive through window. The subject parcel is approximately one acre in size and part of the Ralph Kilborn subdivision. It is situated north of and adjacent to West Parks Highway. The property lies within the Meadow Lakes Community Council area and the proposed site has historically has historically been identified for residential use. The property owner has authorized Fort Green, Alaska to build and operate a marijuana retail store from this location. The area surrounding the subject parcel consists of a mix of commercial, industrial, residential, and vacant properties. Directly south and east of the subject property is West Parks Highway, which provides access for the proposed facility. Public notice was conducted according to MSB 1703. The Meadow Lakes Community Council did not respond and no comments were received from the public. Borough code requires following before granting a conditional use permit, that the proposed use will not be harmful to the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, obtain all applicable licenses from the State of Alaska Marijuana Control Board, not be located within 1,000 feet of school grounds, and the proposed structure receives proposal from the fire mar- approval from the Fire Marshal of jurisdiction and fully complies with all applicable fire codes, and provide at least one parking space per 350 square feet net floor area and provide parking spaces that comply with current ADA guidelines. West Parks Highway is classified as an interstate and is maintained by the State of Alaska. It can accommodate traffic associated with this commercial use and an authorization to construct the driveway has been issued by the state, specifically Department of Transportation Public Facilities. Various land uses including commercial, industrial, residential, and undeveloped exist within 1,000 feet of the subject property. According to the applicant, the proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to midnight, 12:00 AM, seven days a week. No industrial equipment or processes will be, will generate noise and the marijuana retail store will not generate odors. The operation secured a marijuana retail license with permission for a drive through window from the state's Marijuana Control Board, which is currently in a delegated status pending the Planning Commission's approval of this permit. The applicant has identified that the operation will comply with state requirements regarding employee training, security, loitering and soliciting, and the prohibition of persons under 21. In addition, the use will not offer onsite consumption of marijuana. The closest schools, Little Hands Preschool and American Charter Academy are approximately 2,200 feet east of the proposed use. An approved plan review from the Alaska Fire Marshal has been provided, indicating that the commercial structure will fully comply with all applicable state and Alaska fire codes. Furthermore, the applicant has indicated that the use will provide the required parking spaces based on the net floor size and will meet ADA requirements. On April 17, 2025, staff conducted a site visit and observed that the proposed drive through window would be located close to a natural gas meter. Based on information provided by the state Fire Marshal, state law requires vehicle impact protection to be installed at the natural gas meter, which was not installed at the time of the visit. This condition poses a risk to public health and safety based on natural gas meters, based on the natural gas meters' location within the vehicle's circulation pattern for the proposed drive through window. During the visit, it was also observed that the drainage plan, proposing three infiltration areas had not been installed according to the application and ADA parking spaces and access aisles, access aisles had not been constructed according to the ADA guidelines. These guidelines require the surfaces of accessible spaces and access aisles to be smooth, stable, and virtually level in all directions to ensure the safe use for people with disabilities. ADA guidelines also require signage to be posted and access aisle striping. Staff had recommended conditions of approval based on noted site observations. In light of the application material and staff's site visit, staff recommends approval with eight conditions of the conditional use permit to operate a marijuana retail facility with a, with a drive through window at the proposed location. The draft resolution containing these recommendations can be found in your packet starting on page 193. That concludes my briefing for Fort Green's CUP application. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Benedict. And would the applicant like to add any information?
In regards to the natural gas line, we have plans to install a safety cage that connects to the building because there is gas lines that go through there, so we can't do a bollard and dig into the ground. So there will be like a safety cage that you've seen on certain facilities that will block that. And it's also two to three car lengths ahead of where they will be exiting out of the drive through area. In regards to the drainage, these are just things we're getting ready to take care of now that summer times came along with the ADA parking. So those are all going to be completed within the next month. And then we were instructed to send pictures of the drainage swales or whatever they were calling those, the three locations.
Infiltration area.
The infiltration areas. And this summer, we probably don't plan on doing the drive through, installing it this summer. But before the next summer, when that, when there's actual traffic that's going through that area, there will be a safety cage installed before that happens, so. Other than that, I mean, pretty much what he said.
Perfect. And commission members, are there any questions for staff? All right, at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on Resolution 25-04. If you are on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star three now. Okay. It does look like, oh. And it looks like we have a couple of people on the signup list. One in particular, we just heard from Ryan, and is it Tara? Terry? Roger that. Roger that. Okay, in that case, are, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? No? Okay. Seeing and hearing that there are no other persons to be heard, is there any objection to closing the public hearing for public testimony? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Benedict, do you have, just kidding, we appreciate you. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 25-04.
Commissioner McCabe, I'll make a motion to move 25-04.
Commissioner Scoggan will second the motion to move 25-04.
Commissioner McCabe made the motion and it was seconded by Commissioner Scoggan. Is there any discussion? And hearing and seeing none, are there any objections to the approval of the resolution? Okay, hearing and seeing none, or all in favor, we are going to approve Resolution 25-04. Legislative matters for the public hearing. We have Resolution 25-06. A resolution of the Madanouska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSB 17.60 conditional uses to include permit requirements and standards for homeless shelters. Staff is Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director. And welcome, Mr. Strawn. We are ready for your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Once again, name is Alex Strawn, I'm the Planning Director for the Matsu Borough. And let me just get to my notes real fast here. So this, this legislation is at the request of Assembly Member Sumner. And it essentially creates a brand new conditional use permit process. It goes into our existing conditional uses code, which is MSB 1760, where junkyards and marijuana facilities are located, along with other types of uses. So this, any new homeless shelter that comes to the borough outside the cities would come to this board as part of a conditional use permit process. It, you know, we don't have traditional zoning throughout the entire borough, so the Planning Commission would be determining whether the parcel that the use is located would be appropriate for this type of use considering surrounding land uses and the traffic that would be generated from them. It, just like marijuana facilities, it has a separation distance from schools, from recreation youth centers, from childcare facilities, and certain types of alcohol related facilities. There's also standards for increased setbacks. There are standards for minimum parking, they have to have a security plan. They have to show us what kind of lighting they're going to use, that they have adequate lighting, but that is not creating a bunch of glare on adjacent properties. There's landscaping requirements, they have to demonstrate that they are doing the right things with their wastewater and that they have Fire Marshal approval, among other standards. And of course, like any decision that this board makes, if it gets approved or denied, it is appealable to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals. So this has been referred by the Assembly for 60 days, I believe. So I think hopefully we have a decision, a recommendation by next meeting, so it can get back to the Assembly. But would love to have your recommendation today if you're willing to do it. So I'll answer any questions you have.
Are there any questions for staff?
Commissioner McCabe? I noticed this, the ordinance or the...
Ordinance.
They're amended from a previous, I mean, I see some of it in bold. Where did you get the suggested changes from to implement this?
Yeah, so like I said, this is going to an existing section of code. So 1760 is a very well time tested section of code that, that other conditional use permits are already in. So we listed homeless shelters as a, another use that would be regulated and require CUP. And then I think most or all of the standards have been sort of plucked and cherry picked from different sections of code. What we do is we say, okay, what kind of impacts may this type of use have? So homeless shelters, you know, you probably want to keep them away from alcohol related facilities. So we have a distance. So we've sort of plucked them from different sections of code. So if it's bold and underlined as being added, if it's caps and brackets, it's being deleted.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up with some of the nightmares we've seen around other areas of our state with homeless shelters and, you know, camps.
I, I think that's the reason, I mean, the intent of this ordinance is that there are land use impacts associated with homeless shelters and this is trying to get out in front of it before we have a lot of them here.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, at this time, we would like to open the, we would like to open the public hearing on Resolution 25-06 for public testimony. If you are on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star three now. Okay, are there any persons in the audience that wish to speak? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Is there any objection to closing the public hearing for public testimony? Okay, public hearing for public testimony is closed. I will now entertain a motion for Resolution 25-06.
Commissioner McCabe, I'll make a motion to move 25-06.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Scoggan will second that motion, 25-06.
All right, so Commissioner McCabe made the motion and was seconded by Commissioner Scoggan. Is there any discussion on this item, on the, on our agenda? No discussion. Hearing and seeing none, are there any objections to the unanimous approval of the resolution as written? Okay. The Resolution 25-06 has been approved. Next on our agenda, Resolution 25-07. A resolution of the Madanouska Susitna Borough Planning Commission supporting assembly adoption of the 2025 Bogard-Selden Corridor Access Management Plan camp. Staff will be Alex Strawn, standing in for Julie Spackman, long range planner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the commission. Once again, this is Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Matsu Borough. So this is, this was a big project. And I know that the commission has been briefed on this, I think, multiple times, one of which was at the Joint Planning Commission Assembly Meeting. So I won't go into a whole lot of detail of what's in the plan, but I'll just give an overview of it and then entertain questions that you have. So this, this project was done with federal dollars that went through the state of Alaska and was allocated to the borough to do some transportation planning. We hired HDR, which is a consulting firm, have a lot of engineers to help us and develop this, this analysis and report, this, this plan. You know, a lot of plans will go on the shelf and people won't read them. This is not one of them. This is a, a plan that will be useful on day one and has already been useful as we have been developing it. And essentially, it, it is a corridor access management plan for the Bogard-Selden Corridor between the Glen Highway and Church Road. We already have a corridor access management plan west of Church Road, but we do not have one for this very important east-west connection. And for those of you who have been here for a long time, or if you're perusing old imagery, it didn't used to connect. It ended right at Colony. And, and if you go east to, not too far past Palmer High there, there, it was just forest and houses, basically. And we punched that road through and we connected that. And the minute we did that, there was a ton of traffic that appeared on that road. And this road, the way it has not had access management in the past, this was probably just somebody dropping a dozer blade to get out to their farm back in the day and it was not planned out very well. So there's a ton of access points and intersections, you know, even a driveway is considered like an intersection, right? Because you have decisions that are being made and you have vehicles that are entering and exiting the right of way. So it has, this is long overdue. It would have been great if we did it 50 years ago, but we did not. But it is truly better late than never. There is a lot of undeveloped land in the Fishhook Triangle and really all over this corridor, there's large sections of land that we anticipate will eventually be developed. And so this, this access management plan will act as a tool for, for the Planning Department when we're looking at subdivisions, when we're looking at big developments, like for instance, the gravel pit that was just permitted, which I think is done with the appeal process, so I can talk about it. This plan came in handy when we were analyzing that. And, you know, the corridor is owned by both, different sections are owned by the borough and the state. So we worked collaboratively with the state of Alaska through every step of the process to develop this plan. It, it's often confused as a, like a, like a road project, like a design of a road project. And that is not what it is. This is a long-term vision for access of that corridor. And it's important- important to note that, you don't want to get too bogged down in the details of it, because you'll be like, well, this is not a great design, this is really all about access, there are big changes, if this were implemented exactly how it is, you know, some roads would be cul-de-sac, and people would be, have to be given access around to different areas, there are some places that simply should not have access to this road, and where we can, we, we have, provide like a frontage or a backage road, so they can get access to the highway, but it will, over time, as this road becomes more and more congested and becomes more and more dangerous because of all the intersection points, we will have to make these important decisions, whether we like it or not, this gives us a, a plan to where we can be deliberate and have it be used as a guiding document as we make these decisions, as road projects are developed, as, as access points are considered. You know, I guess, another thing, like, if somebody has, say, a section line easement next to them, and they think it's never going to be developed, they can apply to have that section line easement vacated, or any sort of easement, and as it is right now, we're very protective of all of our easements, right? With this plan, it actually can allow us to say, actually, we, we're not going to need that easement, that is not according to our plan, so we can vacate that easement, for instance, or we'll know, actually, this is an important easement that we need to keep, because eventually there will be a road there. It, it helps align intersections, it comes up with a plan for aligning intersections, we all know that the Inkstrom intersection is like the worst intersection in the entire valley, it's scary just to even drive past it, and a big part of that is because when we allowed the plating to occur there, back in the 70s, we didn't require the intersections to line up, so you have all these weird, twisted conflict points, and one of the major goals of this is to align intersections, to close down intersections where they should not be, and to add intersections where they should be, so. I think that's, you know, I gave you a blender of words there, and, and something to think about, and I'd just entertain any questions you have.
Are there any questions for staff? All right, so at this time, we would like to open the public hearing on Resolution 25-07. If you are on the phone and would like to speak to this resolution, please press star 3 now. Okay, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Please go ahead and approach the podium. If you wouldn't mind just signing in on the sheet there, and then, when you start, please say your first and last name, and please spell your last name.
So my name is Mason Jordan, and Jordan's J-O-R-D-A-N. So I live on Burlwood Lane, it's one of the roads that they're talking about putting access roads through. We've been in conversations with different parties of the commission already, because right now, one of their proposed routes is to put the access road through my front yard. And so we're, us and the other property owners that that affects, have all filed the written complaints and made phone calls, saying we did not want the access road there, we wouldn't prefer a frontage road up against Bogard itself, rather than all the way back at the end of our dead-end road, we have six houses on our entire strip. And so I just wanted to kind of, want, you know, ask some questions why we couldn't get a frontage road, the one property owner had agreed to sell to the borough to make the frontage road, and the commercial property, Sumner Properties, is the one that said no to the frontage road. So it seems a little conflict of interest that the commercial property takes precedence over all of the long-term property owners to choose where the access road goes through and takes property away that does not have easements going through it currently. So, sir, and if you could answer questions, I know you got, you got a lot of answers, so.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. And one other, I believe, would you like to speak? All right, please just go ahead and sign in, and then, when you start, say your person's last name, and please spell your last name for us.
Pardon me, I'm going to be speaking off my phone. My name is Renee Blake, B-L-A-K-E, is that too loud? Okay. And I'd like to speak on the segment D of the camp. Excuse me, I live on 3785 East Serendipity Loop in Wasilla, and specifically, I wanted to talk about the 4.5.4 recommendations, 4.6 road connections, and that's on page 39. The plan is to make our neighborhood a throughway from the Village Park neighborhood by extending Porcupine Trail onto East Serendipity Loop, and from there, the plan is that it's going to go to North, North Larson Elementary Circle. The problem that I have with, and I want to say that I have submitted comments before, but I, I reviewed the plan to the best of my knowledge, the entire plan, and it seems to me that the goal is to close off residential driveways and, and roads, and consolidate it into one residential road to limit the access, which makes sense. North, North Larson Elementary Circle is not a residential road, this road is unique to all of the roads on the corridor, it's the road to the only elementary school, and during school season, people will be dropping off their kids and picking them up twice a day. During this time, you can't get into the neighborhood, and it's very difficult to get out. And it's also the road to the Alcantra Sports Complex, there's a trail system accessible all year round, frisbee golf, and during the summer, the ball fields and soccer fields are used frequently. This is a busy and sometimes very congested road, and it doesn't make sense to me to try and force more residential traffic onto East Serendipity Loop to access this road. So basically, that neighborhood would need to come onto our neighborhood and go to North Larson Elementary, and there's at least two times during the day, during school season, that they're not going to be able to get out, that means they're coming through our neighborhood, and there are 83 homeowners in our neighborhood, and East Serendipity Loop is a very long road that they would have to end up going through, if they look and say, I can't get out that road, they're coming through our neighborhood, and it really has a negative impact on us, we have a lot of kids playing in our neighborhood, a lot of dogs, people walking their dogs, and it just, you know, that privacy of having that neighborhood is now going to be impacted if they have to take our neighborhood to get all the way to Selden, and again, you're looking at 70-something homes to pass through, whether they go all the way around East Serendipity Loop, or if they cut through Woodfield Park, that's a lot of homes that they will have to go through to get to Selden, and I think we all know that when you have a neighborhood that's a throughway, that people tend to drive, people can drive faster than normal, and that's my concern, is the safety of our neighborhood. And so I ask that we please use the second option of East Village Circle Loop to North Larson Elementary as opposed to our neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak?
Hello, my name's Adam Bradway, B-R-A-D-W-A-Y, I'm here actually representing the Alaska Department of Transportation, and just wanted to give sort of general support for the plan. I know that there's a lot in it, and there's a lot to digest, but overall, I think the, the intention of managing access on Bogard-Selden is absolutely necessary. We have worked on this for quite a while, and, you know, some of it, when it actually gets designed, won't look exactly like what's, what's in that plan, you know, the exact location of frontage roads and backage roads and things like that are, are going to get figured out in the design process, but the, the plan itself to minimize access as much as possible is, is important, especially for this corridor as we continue to grow, it's one of the fastest-growing parts of the fastest-growing region of the state. So again, I think that there was a very robust public process with this, I think they went out to public comment two different times, responded to all public comments for whatever reason, for whether taking those comments up or not, and just wanted to give the DOT's support for this, because it is a, a corridor that's managed by both of our entities, and we need to, you know, take some serious consideration of the development going on along it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradway. Is there anyone else on the phone? Press star 3. Anyone else, anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak on this resolution? Okay, Mr. Strong, would you like to speak on any of the comments? I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing for public testimony on this item as well.
Yeah, I guess I would say that for a lot of the areas in this corridor access management plan, there are more than one option, and a lot of times, we'll, we'll say that in the text, like it can be here, or here, or here, there can be several options. And I guess, if you want to discuss any of the particular areas that were brought up in, in the public hearing, either myself, or we have engineer in the back who also could discuss that probably better than I could.
Thank you, I will, oh, are there questions?
I just, in looking at the parts of the project, most likely, it won't be done all at once, so the process for this is that when a section comes up for funding, there will be a public process, and there will be hearings held, so the same people who expressed their ideas about how it should be handled will have another opportunity at that time, right?
That is absolutely correct, yeah.
All right, so at this time, I would like to entertain a motion on Resolution 25-07.
Commissioner McCabe, I will move 25-07.
Do we have a second?
Michael Collins will second.
Commissioner McCabe made the motion, and Commissioner Collins seconded. Like to open for discussion. Any discussion? All right, so hearing and seeing none, are there any objections to the unanimous approval of Resolution 25-07? Hearing and seeing none, Resolution 25-07 is approved. All right, so moving to Commissioner business, we have the honor, the four of us, of going through the elections process for the chairperson of the Planning Commission. Commissioner Cohen did step down, and I believe Commissioner Glenn is still happy remaining vice-chair, and is not present today. Commissioner? So I would like to open for nominations, are there any nominations for chairman or woman?
Commissioner Collins nominate Wilfred Fernandez as chair.
I second that nomination.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? At this time? Okay. I will accept the nomination, and seeing as we do not have any other nominations, are there any objections to the unanimous approval of Wilfred Fernandez as the new chairman of the Planning Commission? Going once, just kidding. All right, congratulations, Mr. Fernandez. Upcoming Planning Commission agenda items, are there any questions on the future agenda items provided in your folder? All right. Then we will go ahead and move on to director and commissioner comments. Commissioner Collins?
Just want to say congratulations on your appointment, and I think you well-deserved, you've been on this commission for quite some time, and I believe you can lead us in to forward prosperity, looking forward to working with you, sir, thank you.
Commissioner Skoggin?
I guess, I don't think I would comment real, on the, the camp plan, I, once again, I, a lot of that stuff may never happen, and many, many years out on some of it too, so it's, it's, there's, there's concerns on it, but it, you got to start somewhere, and that's just a management tool that's been put together, and, but yeah, it's a long ways out.
Commissioner McCabe?
Congratulations, and thank you for being willing to serve, and look forward to working with you. Or continuing to work with you, rather.
Director Strong? Deferred to Wade Long, Mr. Long?
Yes, thank you, first off, I'd like to thank, say thank you to Rick Benedict for filling in for Natasha to provide that staff report, also thanks to staff for all the dedicated hard work they do for the resolutions, and also especially congratulations to the new Planning Commission Chair, Commissioner Fernandez.
Thank you, and we're on shared comments, so it is an honor and a privilege to serve this community, I was born and raised here, and have been involved with various boards and commissions with the Matsu Borough, so I appreciate the vote of confidence for my fellow commission members, and I look forward to the year ahead. All right, thank you everyone for participating today, as always, we appreciate your feedback, and we would encourage you to come back and speak more on any item that you deem important enough to attend. All right, I call this meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM.